Good morning and welcome to the public hearing and public meeting of the Landmarks Preservation Commission today, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We'll begin by taking attendance, and I'll ask our deputy counsel, John Weiss, to call the roll.
Chair Carroll.
Here.
Vice Chair Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin, Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Chu, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum, Commissioner Jefferson.
Here.
Commissioner Luxe, Commissioner Master.
Good morning and welcome again to our public hearing and public meeting today, December tenth. This meeting is being held in our hearing room at One Center Street on the ninth floor, and it is also being held via Zoom. If you'd like to participate remotely, you can find that information on our website. It is also being livestreamed on our YouTube channel for anyone who would like to watch the proceedings. We're going to begin this morning with a public meeting item with a proposal by the research department, and then we will move to our public hearing agenda to review applications for work on designated buildings. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Margaret Herman, our deputy director of research.
Good morning. Item number one is LP two six eight four, the Moduliter Building Apartment Duplex, two forty-six East Fifty-Eighth Street, Manhattan, block thirteen thirty-one, lot one twenty-eight. The item proposed for the commission's calendar is the proposed designation of the Moduliter Building Apartment Duplex, a late modern work by Paul Rudolph built between nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety-four, consisting of the entire third and fourth floors, including the entrance hall, north and south living rooms, kitchen, balconies, bedrooms, and bathrooms, as well as the historic fixtures and components of these interlocking double-height spaces, which may include but are not limited to the floor surfaces, wall surfaces, ceiling surfaces, lighting fixtures, and attached furnishings. And presenting today is Matt Postal.
The Moduliter Buildings' skillfully designed residential duplex is an important late twentieth-century modern interior by the American architect Paul Rudolph. Located in midtown Manhattan on the south side of East Fifty-Eighth Street, near Third Avenue, near Second Avenue, the duplex occupies the third and fourth floor of the building, which was designated an individual landmark in two thousand and twenty-three. The proposed interior landmark includes the entire third and fourth floors outlined in red, the north and south living rooms, four bedrooms, the entrance hall, balconies, kitchen, and bathrooms. The Moduliter Building was constructed in phases started in nineteen ninety-three. Planned as twin rental apartments, the Moduliter Building Apartment Duplex received a temporary certificate of occupancy in June of nineteen ninety-four. These units were first leased to tenants in nineteen ninety-six. Following Rudolph's death in nineteen ninety-seven and the settling of his estate in two thousand and one, Wagner moved into the building, removing a wall to combine the north and south units into a single duplex apartment that also functioned as headquarters of the newly established Paul Rudolph Foundation, now called the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture. Commissioners, as you know, to be eligible as an interior landmark, a property must be thirty years old and customarily open to the public. The Moduliter Building Apartment Duplex has been and will continue to be operated by the institute as a house museum accessible to the public on a regular basis. Rudolph purchased the Moduliter site in February nineteen eighty-nine. He and Ernst Wagner, who co-founded the Moduliter Lighting Company in nineteen seventy-five, developed a plan to rebuild the structure as a sales showroom and residential space. Located on a standard twenty-by-one-hundred-foot lot, the Moduliter Building replaced an eighteen-sixties rowhouse that had been substantially remodeled into a commercial structure by the early nineteen-sixties. Rudolph was a leading and sometimes controversial figure in American architecture during the latter half of the twentieth century. He attended Auburn University and the Harvard Graduate School, where he developed a distinctive modern aesthetic using industrial materials like concrete and steel. Rudolph moved his thriving practice to Manhattan in the nineteen-sixties during the period when he headed the Yale School of Architecture, which he designed between nineteen fifty-eight and nineteen sixty-three. A prolific designer of exquisite private residences and major public buildings, he was also an inventive interior designer who created a significant group of multi-level spaces that were praised for their distinctive forms and daring spatial complexity. Featuring an open plan, this extraordinary, all-white, double-height space has few walls. Significant architectural features include tile floors and stairs, exposed metalwork, fireplaces, some lighting fixtures, and built-in furniture. In a two thousand and four article titled "An Architect's Last Word," architect Joseph Giovanni wrote in the New York Times, and this is the quote, "Inside and out, the triumph of the designs that Rudolph pulled off the kaleidoscopic complexity with wallboard and off-the-rack metal studs and joists." For Rudolph, the richness of the materials didn't matter. He aimed at the same spatial qualities regardless of materials. It was space itself, Rudolphian space, that counted. Traversed by floating open stairs that rise and turn, as well as cantilevered balconies and landings that project over the lower floor, the New York Times critic Jason Farago wrote in two thousand and eighteen that these elegant interlocking spaces, quote, "provide a corrective to the view of Rudolph as a brutalist heavyweight." Since two thousand and two, the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture has regularly welcomed visitors by appointment and through monthly open houses, making the Moduliter Building Apartment Duplex the only publicly accessible Paul Rudolph interior in New York in New York City. The Moduliter Buildings Apartment Duplex is a complex, multi-layered, late-modern residential interior unlike any in New York City. Designed by the gifted architect and interior designer Paul Rudolph, and now home to the Paul Rudolph Institute, which celebrates his legacy, the research department recommends that the commission vote to calendar the Moduliter Building Apartment Duplex for consideration as an interior landmark.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Matt or Margaret? Yes, Vice Chair Bland?
I think I know the answer, but Paul Rudolph's house on Beekman Place is also a landmark, individual landmark, but not an interior, I think. Is that right? Because it's privately owned and occupied. Yeah, okay.
Correct. Yep. Any other questions? All right. Any... Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Is this the only publicly accessible?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is. Maybe I missed that earlier. Thanks.
All right. So this is really exciting. When we designated the exterior in two thousand and three, many commissioners who were familiar with the interior commented on the significance of the interior and how it has a dialogue with the exterior. And we noted that at the time, it was not thirty years old, which is what it is required to be to be eligible for consideration as an interior landmark. So it is now, as Matt said, it received its TCO in nineteen ninety-four, so we are able to move ahead with the interior. And it is an incredibly complex spatial environment on the inside. And if you haven't seen it, we can certainly arrange for a tour for anyone who would like to see it. Okay. All right. So we can work on that in the future. Any other thoughts on this one and moving forward with the calendaring?
To think that a narrow lot like twenty feet and to be able to generate such a complex interior is amazing. And also the exterior, too. I'm admiring the exterior, you know?
And dripgate.
Yes.
Yeah.
The lightness.
The light is incredible. Vice Chair Bland?
I think Paul Rudolph's legacy now is coming into clearer focus. It suffered a lot over the last maybe generation even, as so many of his buildings were problematic. They failed in different ways, but many of them did fail and have been removed even. But my point is simply that I think his interiors are just about as important as the exterior of his buildings. And I've actually been in with Paul Rudolph in his home on Beekman Place, and it's unbelievably fabulous place, but it's ineligible to be landmarked. So I'm really happy that this place, which is, I think frankly, far less exciting than the than his than his actual house where he lived on Beekman Place, but it's so good to have something of the interiors landmarked in this city. I think it's great.
And the Rudolph, now Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture, I think that's the new name, is has been wonderful. They're incredible stories. They know everything about every detail. And happy to have it landmarked and happy to have it open to the public, to continue to be open to the public. So we're really grateful for that partnership and support. All right. Yes, Commissioner Jefferson?
What's interesting about this place for me is that it's small-scale intensity. His house is bigger, wider, more open. This is intense and small and aggressively architecturally.
Yes. Yeah. Okay. So I'm looking forward to this one. So Commissioner, Vice Chair Bland, would you make a motion to calendar this item?
It's all moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson, would you second the motion?
No, second.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. It is officially on the commission's calendar, and we look forward to the process. Thank you very much, Margaret and Matt. Now we'll move to our preservation department agenda, and we'll turn it over to Corey Harala, Director of Preservation.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. We'll start today's preservation department agenda with public hearing item number one, LPC twenty-five dash zero three three two nine, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Brooklyn, block two sixty-three, lot seventy-five oh two, two sixty-five Henry Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. This is a Greek Revival-style rowhouse built in eighteen forty-four, and the application is to construct a rooftop addition.
Hey, Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing via Zoom. Thomas, I have given you control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen, and then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record, and you may begin.
Good morning. My name is Thomas Berry with Opera Studio Architecture. I'm the architect for the proposed vertical extension of two sixty-five Henry Street in Brooklyn. Oops. The site is located on the east side of Henry Street between John and the Street in the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. The house is an existing nineteenth-century brownstone. We previously undertook renovations on the house, which included replacement of the front facade windows, interior, replacement of the windows with new wood windows and brick molds. We're currently working at staff level to do some brownstone repairs and other repairs to the trims and masonry and pavement at the lower level of the front of the building. The proposed addition would take an existing attic story and raise the roof for a portion of it to create an eight-foot-eleven-inch clear interior habitable space, an occupiable habitable living room, where there was previously non-inhabitable attic space on the C of O. In addition, we will be adding a bulkhead to provide stair access to a small roof terrace, which occupies the extent of the roof, the addition on top of the raised attic space. The raised attic space will be set back three foot from the rear, existing rear elevation of the townhouse, and twenty-one feet from the front elevation of the townhouse behind an existing bulked roof, which slopes up to an apex and pitches back. So here's the... You can see the apex of the roof. It's a little... The apex of the roof, the proposed addition, three setback, and then a two-story rear addition, which is existing and previously approved at staff level with landmark staff last year. This illustrates the extent of the previously approved addition. We add four foot six inches onto an existing rear addition that occupied two stories of the building. We effectively rebuilt, for the most part, the existing addition in the course of adding the additional four foot six inches onto the building. Blow up the extent of that previous addition in the context of the new raised roof and bulkhead. Photos of the rear addition with the new deck, windows at basement level, the first floor with divided lights, and modifications to the existing window openings at the upper floors. This is the block plan showing the context of the roof addition, as well as the already previously approved and constructed two-story rear addition in the context of other rear additions on the block. Section detail, as you'll see in the site photos, the bulkhead is not visible from the street. The proposed gutter, which sits at the front of the bulkhead, will be visible and is within the line of sight as the site photos would indicate. The vertical addition or vertical extension of the existing attic space will have two painted iron railings, front and back, set back three feet from the rear facade with clear story windows providing light and air to the newly created living space. The bulkhead will be clad in a faux aluminum material, known by the brand name Knotwood. The aerial view showing the context of the building, the adjacent existing bulkheads throughout the block. Front elevation showing extent of the vertical attic addition, the railing, and the proposed bulkhead. The rear elevation showing the extent of the recently constructed rear addition, two-story rear addition, windows at the upper floors, the clear stories that will be put into the three-foot setback brick clad wall, the proposed railing, and the bulkhead addition with the windows. The overall section indicating the visibility. Details of the construction and cladding. Actually, this shows the clear stories, and the small parapet will be installed. Cross-sectional view. The bulkhead was framed up as a mock-up and wrapped and weather-protected, causing some leakage into the into the house. These photos were taken on the same day as the following street views in September. Well, actually, they weren't taken the same day. They were taken at the same week on a bountier day. The bulkhead is not visible in any of these views. The owner put a sheet plywood on top of the frame and installed a gutter to floor out, which, as we as we see here, as we found, is visible from the street, a minor visible horizontal black painted aluminum gutter that blends in with the existing course and is minimally visible. This is a view of that gutter taken from the roof recently on a very windy day, bleak. Thank you.
Thank you. We have some questions. Vice Chair Bland, followed by Commissioner Ginsburg.
Okay. Two questions. First, are there changes that are being made as part of this application to the rear windows on the upper floors? Are those all existing?
No, the changes were made previously under the previous application, which we approved at staff level.
So those all exist now like that, right?
Yes, now. They were installed earlier this year.
Yeah. Okay. And the second question is, even though it's minimally visible, it could be made completely invisible, I think, if the slope of the bulkhead, which is typical of bulkheads, would work with the stair grade so that it would, you know, it would slope rather than be a flat roof. Why can't you do that?
That's correct. That would be possible for... I think this illustrates it well. There's an existing... There are a number of logistical reasons why it was official to put the gutter and the spout on this side of the building. There is an existing vertical internal rainwater leader that we're tied to, which actually is illustrated by this dashed line at the front. So this was for that reason, the place to put it, this existing small roof slope will effectively shed water. It's three feet. It's a very minimal amount of water with a drip edge. And so, you know, the goal with the design was to, we're coming up at this location, we keep it flat, allow light to come into this former attic space through the stair, which is otherwise has normal opportunities for natural daylight and getting some light through the rear transit windows. So the design goal was to get as much light in as possible through these through these windows and contain a simple volume and height that is in alignment with the shape of the roof terrace.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So this is following up on Commissioner Bland's question. And the bulkhead roof is eleven feet above the floor, presuming you have about a foot for structure. That gives you a ten-foot ceiling, but that's a guess because I couldn't find that dimension. By code, a stair bulkhead only needs a seven-foot ceiling, as I understand it. I realize one might want more than that, but it seems like you could take off some height of that bulkhead, which would, tying into what Commissioner Bland said, make the bulkhead totally invisible from the street. Am I missing something?
No, you're absolutely right. Technically, it'd be possible.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, we're going to move to public testimony, and we may come back. Well, we'll come back to you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. If you'd like to speak on this item, please click the raise hand button now. Okay. We have one hand raised currently, that being Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HCC finds this rooftop addition too tall and bulky. We ask the applicant to shrink and slope the bulkhead so that it will not be visible from the street. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I see Christina Conroy from VSNY in the attendees' list. Christina Conroy, if you would like to speak on this item, we do have testimony from VSNY for this item. Please click the raise hand button now. Okay. She's not... Okay, there you are. So Christina Conroy, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. And please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I am Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society in New York. Now founded in New York City in nineteen sixty-six, the Victorian Society in America is dedicated to fostering the appreciation and preservation of our nineteenth and early twentieth-century heritage. The New York chapter promotes preservation of our historic districts, individual and scenic landmarks, interiors, and civic art. The Victorian Society supports the concept of a rooftop addition at two sixty-five Henry Street, but the top of the addition is unnecessarily and inappropriately visible from the street. The bulkhead could easily be made invisible by either lowering its generous ceiling height approximately ten feet or sloping it in front to follow the slope of the stairs. Neither of these changes would significantly compromise the use of this addition. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I did not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends approval with the condition that it is verified by LPC that the addition cannot be seen by Henry Street. And we also received testimony from the Brooklyn Heights Association recommending denial, which was shared with the Commissioners beforehand. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to ask the applicant if you'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Yes, just in that, the bulkhead itself is not visible from the street, as the two sets of photographs that I presented illustrate, it only became visible when the gutter was added, and that's verifiable. And therefore, I would suggest that, for the record, that the terminology be correct and that the gutter of the bulkhead is visible, not the bulkhead volume itself. And we take your lead on your recommendations for following through this.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any final questions, Commissioners? Okay, let's... Commissioner Chu, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we'll begin our discussion on the proposal for this work at the rooftop of this building. And there are two components. There's the altering of the roof line to provide more headroom at the attic level, top floor, and then there is the bulkhead on top of it. And as we've seen and discussed, the proposed gutter for the bulkhead is visible. And just a few things for context, the, you know, under the rules, the staff is authorized to approve minimally visible mechanical equipment over front facades if it's less than twelve inches. The staff also, in some cases, can approve altering the roof line to create headroom in the attic space. And this application is before us because it's the combination of all of these things, in addition to these additions being in conjunction with a previously approved rear yard addition, which triggers full commission review. So we'll be looking at it both on its own merit as well as the the which triggers full commission review. So we'll be looking at it both for on its own merit as well as the, the contact, the cumulative effect. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Ginsburg, would you start this one?
So in general, I think this is all right, but I think they should lower the bulkhead. Working with staff. They don't have to go down to seven feet, but get it, probably take at least a foot off of it so that it is not visible because I don't think there's a need for that. The other option, as Commissioner Bland said, would be to slope the bulkhead so that then it wasn't visible. And another thing I'd point out, although it really isn't our jurisdiction, is they're showing a black flat roof. And by code, it needs to be a reflective roof with, I think it's an SRI of above 75 and not, that would be hopefully something the building department would pick up, but just flagging it to them.
Right, thank you very much for that. Commissioner Chen?
I'm in agreement with Commissioner Ginsburg.
Vice Chair Bland?
Yes, either, either shorten the flat roof or slope it in the front so that no visibility exists.
Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree. The applicant should work with the staff either to, you know, either slope or lower or both the bulkhead so it is not visible from the street.
Commissioner Chu? Oh, Commissioner Lutfi?
I agree.
Commissioner Chu?
Agreed. I'd also just add that I can't tell how far back the bulkhead is from the rear facade. It looks very close.
I think he said three feet.
Okay, I wanted to make sure because it's not dimensioned, so, okay.
We'll have him confirm that, but I think that's what I heard him say. Okay. Commissioner Master?
I agree.
Okay, Commissioner Jefferson?
I agree.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Agreed also. I think we should suggest that on that ever lengthening list of rules, reconsiderations that we ask the staff to work with applicants wherever possible, even in a situation of an as, you know, a staff level permit, that if visibility can be reduced, that it, that it is.
Okay. All right, so we will make a motion to approve it with the modification that they eliminate the visibility of the bulkhead and gutter working with the staff. Okay?
Got it. Thank you.
With regards to LPC 25-03329, 265 Henry Street, Brooklyn Heights Historic District. A Greek Revival style warehouse built in 1844. Application is to construct a rooftop addition. I note that the building's style, scale, material and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. I recommend approval with modifications that the proposed work will not damage or eliminate any significant architecture features, that the cumulative effect of the added volume of the rooftop addition combined with the previously approved rear addition will not overwhelm the building or the surrounding buildings, that only the top edge of the rooftop addition will be minimally visible when viewed directly across Henry Street and will not be visible from any other public thoroughfare, that the rooftop addition will be set back from the front and rear facades thereby helping to maintain a sense of historic building and original massing, that the design and materiality of the rooftop addition featuring metal and brick cladding, punched windows and door opening skylights and raised deck with railings will be in keeping with the variety of materials found at rooftop accretions within the block and historic district, and that the proposed work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the building and the Brooklyn Heights Historic District. However, working with staff, the applicant should lower the bulkhead addition, modify it so it is not at all visible from the front street.
All right, Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum? Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Ten in favor, nine opposed, the motion passes.
Approved, please continue to work with the staff to reduce the, eliminate, reduce the bulkhead to eliminate the visibility and we'll move to the next item.
Next item is pop, item number two. LPC 24-06787, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in a borough of Brooklyn, block 1916, lot 63. 260 to 264 Waverly Avenue in the Clinton Hill Historic District. This is a garage built after 1906 and the application is to modify window openings, replace windows, reconstruct the rear addition, excavate the cellar and legalize the installation of a cornice without LPC permits.
Hey Commissioners, the applicants have entered the hearing via Zoom. Jeff, you now have control of the presentation. You just need to click on your screen. And then you can advance the slides using your arrow keys or your mouse. Please state your name for the record and you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Wandersman. I'm a partner at Pallad Architecture. As mentioned, this is a carriage house at 264 Waverly in the Clinton Hill Historic District. And the scope was just discussed, window replacement, primary and secondary facades and partial excavation of new cellar under the building. Here we have a couple of the historic photos that we were able to get. These are taken from between the 1950s and the 1980s as far as we can tell. We don't have any original photos of the building. The building believed to be constructed in early 1900s. The building operated as a neighborhood restaurant and much of the mid 1900s and in 1995, it was converted into a single family restaurant, a, a single family restaurant with two upstairs apartments combined with the restaurant downstairs into one home. And from these photos, it's not clear if the front facade was rebuilt or not. You know, since there's so much time between when the building was originally constructed and when the photos were taken. But as you can tell in these photos, there's not a large amount of original detail that is being maintained. It's considered more of the utilitarian building. So existing photo of the facade as it is today, just with our notes marking up a couple of the changes that have been made. Garage doors that were added, lintels and window profiles that were done through LPC previously. And the cornice that was added, that cornice, as mentioned, was added without LPC's consent or review process, but the intention is, is not to make a change of that cornice and to keep it. It's painted wood cornice, the facade brick, painted brick. We're lot 63 shown in the blue between, on Waverly between DeKalb and Willoughby. Just something to note is sort of the variation of building types and scales on the block going from residential to university. Just a lot of different scale and building typology on this particular block. And also one other thing is that the rear facade, which we will look at in a little bit, is not visible from the streets. This slide shows some of the other carriage houses on the block. Mostly we're just showing this to show the variation in both scale and typology for these carriage houses. There's not one dominant style that we're fitting into. They range in two to four stories, different architectural styles. As mentioned, ours is two stories and not looking to change that vertically. And just a close up showing the connection between our building and the neighboring building. The one shared wall between the neighboring buildings is a one-story masonry wall right here, which is just connected to an exterior courtyard. This is a survey of our lot. The building is nearly 44 feet wide, but the lot is only 50 feet deep. As mentioned, we do have this one story, one-story shared wall right here, but all other walls of the building are independent walls. One other thing to note is that even with the small lot size, our building is substantially under the maximum FAR. But we're not proposing any vertical additions, not looking to create something that's going to be more visible from the street than, than is needed. They're able to for the most part fit into the space that they have allotted, but they are looking with this partial cellar excavation to have some additional storage space, mechanical space and just some extra usable area, but trying to do this in a way that's going to be less prominent from a visibility standpoint. So this this is a section showing the existing and the proposed. As you can tell in the blue, we are looking to excavate under the building. I'll show in a minute. It's not a full excavation under the entire building. But we have about eight foot clear height, nine foot from the level of the first floor, finished floor. This has already been reviewed by a structural engineer with the LPC requirements in, in place. The engineer has proposed the strategy for doing the excavation and also reviewed the condition of the existing building and found it to be sturdy and that it could be done in a way without impacting any of the other buildings. There's no SOE really needed with what we're proposing, but all of that said, there would be all of the standard LPC requirements for monitoring, vibration, visual, craft monitoring. So all of that's already been submitted to our preservationist. How we would plan to do that. This is showing a proposed cellar plan. So there is an existing garage in the building that's being maintained over here. And so we are not looking to go anywhere near that shared wall. The excavation is inset nearly 16 feet from the property line on this side, the south side. And as mentioned, all of the other walls that the excavation is happening under are independent walls. In terms of the, the floor plans, other than, you know, reconfiguring the interiors, just in yellow showing some of the areas that are noteworthy, we are rebuilding the sunroom in the exact same location that it currently is. And then on the second floor, proposing a roof deck over that sunroom and a new three-foot balcony off of a master bedroom. Just some additional photos of the front facade. In terms of the front facade, we're trying to bring a little more consistent, consistency to what's there now. So these two center windows on the second floor are being made the same size as the two outside windows. And then bringing that alignment down to the first floor. So here we have the exact same one-over-one configuration with the alignment and aligning head and sills throughout. And then also aligning the lintel line across, keeping the exact same height of the lintels that's in the existing, but creating one consistent lintel line that goes across both the first and second floor. Some existing photos of the rear facade. You'll see a little bit later in the next side what the, what's going on with the windows, but there's again some inconsistency in the window layout and sizing that we're trying to address. There is a thick screed on the brick, but there, there is this existing cornice line, which is nice, we presume to be original. We would be maintaining that cornice line and restoring it in a certain location. So here you can see in the existing rear elevation, the inconsistency of those rear windows. There was a chimney that was added that we'll be removing and restoring the cornice line wherever, where that chimney line was. And then adding blazing on this side, we were maintaining an 18-inch pier and on this side, there is a three-foot pier. Then some larger windows in the rest of the rear facade. And then last, we do have an exposed north-facing lot line with fence. And here we are proposing two fixed windows that would go along the lot line with a spandrel that would go in between those windows. There is the railing for the roof deck could be visible from the street. We would be planning to keep the fencing that is here that's going to conceal most of the stair in the back. Some photo collages of what those lot line windows would look from, from the street. And then axons of the configuration of the building. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have questions on this one? Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg?
I want to understand something. You're, you're talking about consistency, yet my impression of carriage houses, they're often quite inconsistent. And isn't the real reason you're doing this to get more light into the building because it doesn't, which, because you're enlarging windows?
That's accurate. I mean, while doing that, we are also trying to, to bring an amount of consistency and we did do a study of some of the other Clinton Hill townhouses and there is definitely precedent for ones that have a lot of the same size upper windows going across the whole facade. But yes, generally you are completely correct that the main reason that we are creating new windows is to, to bring more light in. And since we're doing that, we're trying to find, you know, a good organizational strategy that works with it, that you know, doesn't feel incongruous to the, to the building type.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Commissioner Chu?
Yes, do, we don't have historic images of this structure, the facades, do we? Other than those?
The 50s and 80s photos is, is all we were able to get unfortunately.
As far as we understand, the existing window openings are the original window openings.
I mean, they definitely.
Go ahead, Mr. Wandersman.
They definitely like changed some things. There's a garage here where there wasn't, you know, there was a, a separate door, like the restaurant door, looks like it's changed a bit. So you know, as far as I can see in the upper floors, they look consistent to what's there today, but I, I see some changes on that lower floor.
Okay.
Yes, Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, do you have any photos of the rear of other facades currently? I'd like to see the context of, you know, what, there are other carriage houses here and I'd like to see what's, what's going on with the other ones.
I don't have them as part of this presentation.
I mean, currently.
Yeah. I think a lot of them are not visible. So.
Normally, it must be the context of rear facades in a presentation and that's what I'm asking for, not, you know, whether they're visible or not.
I think the staff person, James, can, can talk a little bit about the other facades maybe?
Sure, just, sorry, James, you're CL Preservation Staff. If we go to the appendix, we, we do have at least a photo from a private path. And it's, it's unfortunately at the back of the presentation. One more. So th- this is a path that is connecting Waverly and I'm blanking on the street name. Yes, and it is private, is owned by St. Joseph's College. It is gated, although the gates are permanently open. And unfortunately, the, the neighboring structure, there, there's a large fence blocking it, so the, the view is quite limited. And this is again taken from private property.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg?
The, you said the chimney is not original. What do you base that on and do you have any idea when it was built? The you said the chimney is not original. What do you base that on, and do you have any idea when it was built?
My guess is that it was ducting for the restaurant. But I'm I'm basing that just on my own experience of needing mechanical exhaust for restaurant equipment and trying to conceal that, but I don't have a great uh any better idea.
When the restaurant started operation?
Um, I'm not sure. I know it stopped in nine uh in ninety-five it stopped. I could see if I did live right around here for many years, uh, but after after my time.
Thank you.
All right, other questions? Commissioner Chu?
I mean, we can see from the uh older photos that there were slightly different configurations at the ground level. I think we we can understand the changes just by looking at the photos. A doorway may have been bricked in at the base. Um, the left, which looks like a garage door now, was another window and a doorway. So all the revisions through time have done done in a sense that is minor to the existing opening size. I just want to point that out. It's not that it's there's been a wholesale change here.
Great, thank you. All right, um, if there are no other questions, we'll move to public testimony and come back. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few remote participants with their hands raised. The first we'll be hearing from is Rosaria Sinisi. Rosaria Sinisi, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Rosaria Sinisi. I represent Citizens for Responsible Neighborhood Planning of Clinton Hill and Fort Greene, which is involved in historic district matters in both areas. We find the proposed fenestration for the north facade, despite a slight revision since the land use presentation, to be inappropriate in the context of both the Clinton Hill Historic District and this particular site. The proposed new windows in that secondary facade feature anomalous twenty-first century design and proportions and will be fully visible from a long stretch of the public thoroughfare on Waverly Avenue. Our letter includes a series of photos showing this exposure. The proposed portions of these windows would clash not only with those in the primary facade, but also with those in the historic properties surrounding applicant's building to the north and west, which are also fully visible from the same vantage points along Waverly. Please also note that the Land Use Committee of Brooklyn Community Board Two recommended the elimination of the proposed north-facing windows in this application. We therefore recommend that the Landmarks Preservation Commission direct the applicant to either eliminate the north-facing windows or replace them with windows echoing the layout and design of those in its primary facade. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, the renovations undertaken at this facade have turned it into something it never was. The building at one time had certain integrity in its nineteen thirties and forties redesign with steel casement windows, a simple stone parabit uh parapet coping, um, and symmetrical bays of garage and side doors. While not a lovely building, it reflected the continued development of this type of service building on this street. The original character of this building can be inferred from the photographs of the rear. Here we can see an exceptional brick cornice and parapet. We believe the historic features of the rear facade should have provided inspiration for renovations to the front. We do not think it's appropriate to enlarge the small window openings on the second floor front. There are similar small window openings on the back facade. These small windows likely related to the original carriage house function of the building. We find the long vertical window proposed for the visible side facade to be out of character with the building and district. And finally, the proposed openings at the rear facade are too large and irregular in placement. They will overwhelm this facade. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HCC notes that the applicants are looking to legalize a new cornice. We believe they should consider the lovely cornice that exists on the rear of this building, which we suggest should be replicated on the front facade. We also find the proposed proportion of glass on the building's rear to be too high. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Brooklyn Community Board Two recommends conditional approval with the following comments. Carriage houses are not meant to be symmetrical. The community expressed concern with some front facade windows. The lintels are currently wider than the window and garage openings, and that detail should be maintained. The board recommends maintaining the second floor front facade window as is. Remove the fourth window from the right north on the first floor front facade. Remove the north-facing windows from the design and ensure the front facade lintels are consistently wider than the openings below. We also received written testimony from the Society for Clinton Hill and the Fort Greene Association, all of which was shared with the Commissioners beforehand. And with that, I'll bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Thank you very much. So I'd like to ask the applicant if he'd like to respond to the comments we've heard.
Um, I mean, the in terms of like what we're keeping, I mean, I I think like to restore something that was not um particularly uh a a strong example of a of a particular type at the time, you know, is not necessarily creating the best building we can create. So I I think we are trying to um be conscious of the type of building it is uh and trying to create uh it to me, creating some consistency here is is not uh in any way making what that condition is worse. I and to me, I think it's, you know, still uh keeping the major elements of the building and uh creating something that feels uh like it's it works with that style. Um, you know, in terms of the the cornice, we certainly agree it would be nice to do that. It's not something that the owners have expressed and in the ability to take on that work of of recreating a brick cornice on the front. In terms of the the lot line windows, we we did go through a couple of rounds um and definitely tried to create something that was less going to be less visual. Um, you know, again, if you if you take a look at the existing like blank wall, um, I don't think it's doing very much uh to add to the neighborhood with the blank wall, and currently that sunroom does have glass all along the side that is visible. Um, you know, from that from that thoroughfare, so it won't be glassy there, so we are trying to limit um, you know, limit that amount. Certainly, the issue with the rear and the amount of glass is something that's come up before. Uh, definitely, as um noted by the previous person from the commission, the the clients are very interested and sort of maximizing the light into the building. Uh, so the rear was the place that we were trying to do that. Um, and again, hmm, sort of knowing the the um trying to work with with within the constraints of the building envelope, not not creating something that's going to go larger, so not trying to create um something that would totally, with an only two-story building, something that would really dwarf the original structure. That's it.
All right, thank you. Any final questions, Commissioners? All right, let's uh close the hearing and move to our discussion. Commissioner Chapin, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So I'm over.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bland, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this is an application to um review changes to the front side and rear include and uh at the rear yard, including excavation. And at the front, the proposal is to legalize the installation of a cornice that was added at some point without permits and to modify window openings on the side, the north side, to create new lot line window openings, and then at the rear to create uh new openings and construct the rear yard addition, and again, the excavation. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you start this one?
Sure. Um, on the one hand, we try to give greater latitude to rear facades, understanding that they are less visible to the public. On the and on that same token, the the building itself is has been significantly changed and and might not be considered a significant contributor to the to the district. However, um, I think that um the block has a lot of character. Uh, the district has a lot of significant uh qualities. And I think that the um proposal here is a bit drastic. I I think that the openings on the uh ground level uh and the uh the sunroom addition is is acceptable to me. I think that the second floor modifications should uh look a little bit more at their neighbors and try to create a sense of continuity with their neighbors, even if uh they are not necessarily the original openings that this building had. Um, I think that the party line windows uh are uh not not what one would expect in a in a historic building. For some reason, they didn't bother me as much as 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 I thought they would, but I'd be happy to hear what others think.
All right, and um if we can look, can we move to a slide that shows the front facade? We can just look at.
Terms of the front facade, um, i- it's unfortunate that the building was modified. Yeah, this is the this is the um.
This is the front, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are. Well, they want to legalize the cornice, which was added without permits, and then um enlarge the window opening
Right.
that they are consistent on the second floor.
Right. It's.
Yeah, there's an uh elevation.
Yeah, it's it's it it was an unfortunate move, uh, the cornice. The interesting, you know, the the most significant feature of the building is the rear cornice, which had a lot of character and and one, you know, one could bet that the front cornice had some resemblance to it in terms of materiality and detailing. So for me, the the front cornice just smacks of if the developer looked up precast part number fifty-eight B and just slapped it on there, so I I personally do not think it's a an addition that enhances the building's relationship to the district. I think that the um the windows, oddly enough, uh, are another whisper from the past that um uh they're kind of a facing, but I think that the uh the windows on the first floor are acceptable to me, uh, and on the second floor, I guess I'd be willing to hear what other people say, but uh they don't make the building worse. So I I could be persuaded on them, but I think the cornice was a mistake.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg?
So I first want to say that I don't like presentations that talk about one thing when really the other thing is why they're doing this. This isn't about consistency, which I don't think is totally appropriate. This is about bringing more light into the building, and there are other ways to do it, like skylights, which I don't think are being done. Uh, and so I I tend to agree with Commissioner Goldblum's comments. Uh, you know, on the front facade, those two middle windows could be lengthened without widening. Um, on the rear facade, uh, the little balcony on the uh on the one side seems to me probably not a good move. I also sort of like the chimney and think that the chimney gives a certain, that this was an inconsistent facade. And I understand there need, the the owner is talking about changes to make their interior nicer and lighter, and I think that makes some sense, and I'm open to change, but uh this seems like more massive than is needed, particularly on the second floor. Uh, if I kept the chimney, uh, I realize those little windows that were in in bathrooms or uh are are probably do need to be enlarged for habitable space. Uh, and I I sort of, I like the fact that it's inconsistent. I think changing the addition from something that does look tacked on to something that is more permanent and making a roof terrace is all right. And I think the side windows pop or or they, I I agree with Commissioner Goldblum, they're not horrible, but I think potentially raising the sills a bit so they're not floor to ceiling would just help with the proportions of how they looked, and so I think this should be restudied.
Thank you. Commissioner Chen?
Great comments by the fellow Commissioners. I think, you know, um, Michael used the word um whisper. I I'm thinking of another word of the the second floor on the front facade window is almost a glimpse into the past. And I think the the irregular pattern plus the small window will let, you know, others understand the history of this area a little bit better, and so I would defer to others about what you think about the second floor window uh on the front facade because it clearly tells the history here, but I understand the applicant needing adjusted making for modern um, but I think I'm in agreement with the rear facade. The rear facade needs to be restudied. Um, just that's that's quite clear.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair Bland?
Um, this is a a building which is uh started as a garage, then it was a restaurant, now it's a residence. Uh, we call that adaptive reuse, I guess, but um I look at a building like this, which is um interesting, but but hardly um you know, a perfect example of anything that exists in the historic district as as a as a moment of transformation. Uh, let's transform the building into something that's that's an interesting piece of architecture that includes its historic qualities, but is also of its own moment. And I think this building is now not of its own moment at all, or if it is, it's a a bad example. Uh, it it's anemic. It uses uh almost a suburban uh vocabulary of windows that are too wide, not tall enough, I mean, tall enough, but probably too wide. Uh, the proportions in the front, I think, are all kind of off. Uh, and I think the back has has been noted, needs kind of a kind of a rethinking as well. But um I just think there's a wonderful opportunity to do something interesting with this building, and it is decidedly not interesting now.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, uh, I'm not going to quote Emerson, but I was thinking about his comments about consistency during the discussion because I think that in this case, inconsistency is what really gives this building its charm and character. It's not, you know, it's a it's sort of a very ordinary facade in some ways, but the windows kind of make it work and speak to its its history. And I agree with uh Commissioner Ginsburg that skylights might be a way to introduce some light into the building and avoid having to change the, the windows on the front facade. I also feel on the back facade that, you know, I really would like to see the context of the other buildings. Perhaps we can, the staff can work with owners or something to just get a, a drawing or something. So we, we don't have, we, we, we have these little carriage houses and the one next to it looks on the front to be very much like the original. And I'd like to see how the backs have been treated at this point. It doesn't, I'm, you know, very open to changes on the back and, you know, having something different, but I, I feel this may be going overboard in terms of the direction and perhaps I'd like to see more relationship to the historic context. And I don't even know what the historic context is on the back in this case. What's, what's happened to it? So I need some more information and I definitely am not in favor of regularizing the windows on the front and the upper story.
Thank you. Commissioner Lutfi?
So all of my colleagues have made such, have made terrific comments, and I have to say I agree with them, different from, you know, everyone made a very important point. The, the most important point that was made at the very beginning is that, I think that was you, Michael, that this district and this are, it's, it's such, it's so lovely. And there's a wonderful assemblage of carriage houses, each a little different. They have their own character and this is an incredible opportunity to create, to, by making tweaks, to make this building be special and be contributing in its own way. And, and that, I think, is a goal that the applicant should really think about as they look to make some modifications. Ultimately, it will, it will really add to the historic landscape. And I have to say this from a real estate perspective, it will add to the value of the building, which is very, very important in the long term. So I agree with the comments on the front facade of the building. There's just, in a, in a facade that's been changed dramatically, there is something wonderful about these two smaller windows. They, they add some kind of character. And I hate to say this, and I know it's not really, I agree about the comments about the cornice. I do think the cornice in the back is really lovely. And, you know, if it could be carried to the front, I think it would add a lot to this building in terms of giving it a little more character, making it more lovely. On the side, lot line windows, I happen to agree that the windows are, they seem too large. I don't have a problem with lot line windows in general, and I'm all about letting light in, especially when it's a residential use. So the skylight idea is great. The lot line windows are a good idea, but way out of scale for this size of this building. And maybe they need a muntin in them, I know, just to, as a reference back to the original time period of the building. On the drawings, it doesn't really indicate how wide they are, although it indicates how tall they are, so that needs to be clarified. And then on the back, I just, I don't, it looks, if you look at this slide, number one, I think too much fabric has been taken off of the back. We pay a lot of attention to that on townhouses. And I think it makes this a hodgepodge. And so that needs to be reworked so that there's some kind of coherence here visually in terms of the, the rear and, and in terms of the, of the balance and the retention of fabric.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I agree with many of the comments of my fellow commissioners. I do also want to support Commissioner Bland's comment. I do believe this was an opportunity. It's an interesting structure. And this adaptive reuse that's happening to it was an opportunity to take its quirkiness and do something interesting, maybe even more contemporary. But the current proposal in my mind, just as it's been said, alters any character that the existing structure had in a way that is, is giving, making unclear and does remove a lot of fabric. In my mind, the front facade, if, if there wasn't a different approach, the, the approach that's currently been taken alters several windows in a minor way that I think are completely unnecessary. The, the ground floor, splitting the window from the door is removing material. It also creates another awkward situation with another opening that I think just confuses it more. And I do agree that the upper inconsistency is a part of the character. The cornice, I also believe, was the wrong approach. So ultimately, the, the rear facade, I will also comment, too much glazing. It does feel a little bit like it's a suburban ranch house in terms of its aesthetic with the big sliding doors. And I also think that the north facade is not in character with either of those two aesthetics. It's almost as if the overlay has created three facades of different styles. And I'd like the applicant to just rethink the whole proposal.
Thank you. Commissioner Master?
I think I'm in the minority. However, I think that the front facade is okay. And the reason I say that is because I think it's been modified quite a bit and it is a non-contributing building. And I think we're just allowing some variety and we're modifying the window openings. So, you know, in my opinion, you know, preserving the irregular fenestration just doesn't seem compelling to me. I agree that it may not be the most attractive, but, you know, for, for me, I think, I think it's appropriate. In terms of the north-facing side wall, I think that their proposal to do the tall vertical windows hugging the corner makes it fairly unobtrusive. And when you look at the view, I don't think it's that bad. And so I can find that acceptable. In terms of the rear facade, yes, there is a lot of window. And here, I will agree with the other commissioners that I just, it's not that, and it isn't publicly visible. However, I just don't think they've made their case strong enough to have as many openings as they have. So that I, I would restudy.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jefferson?
I would just add to the comments of other commissioners. This is a facade problem looking for a concept. The architect did not have a conceptual framework to work from. So on the front facade, he moved it to the existing doorway. He shifts it. He doesn't have any character for it. And the two, the two existing windows really make the facade work and it removes them because there's no concept of what he's doing. The side elevation, the back elevation is really just a, a bit, it's just a mess it needs to be. Because it's, it seems to be three portions divided into three areas and it's not clearly what they are. And there's this beautiful circular stair coming down, and when you look at it in section, it's kissing the building. It should be moved away. The, 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 the concept of using modern materials and how they're used and space between them is that part of this. So he has to go back to some kind of idea of what he's doing, what language he's using, and then just work it through. And I think there's a possibility, the side view with the long windows, I, I mean, I love light and that would be, but somehow maybe they should be shorter. The language issue is part of that.
Okay. Thank you all for your really thoughtful comments on this project. So we're going to take no action today. We've heard a lot of suggestions about the ways and that these three facades can be restudied to make them sort of coherent together and have a, an approach that is consistent throughout and really look at the removal of historic fabrics, the elements that make this building, give this building character and how you can play or draw upon that, use those as cues in your alterations to your openings. So, so we, and I think that also many commissioners felt that a cornice that is more evoke evocative of the rear cornice, if not matching, would be a more appropriate solution for the cornice. So we'll take no action. We'll ask you to work with the staff and continue to restudy and revise your proposal, and we'll have you back when you're ready. And with that, we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number three, LPC 25-04036. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 614, Lot 25, 244 Waverly Place in the Greenwich Village Historic District. Pair of Romanesque Revival-style row houses designed by William B. Tuttle and built in 1886. The application is to combine the buildings, modify the front and side facades, lower the areaway, reconstruct the rear facades, construct a rooftop addition, and excavate the cellar.
Good morning, Commissioners. Sarah Scher, Higgins Quaysbarth and Partners, Juliette Hernandez Eli from Hernandez Eli Architecture, and I will be walking you through the proposal for 244 Waverly Place. 244 Waverly Place is located on the west side of Waverly Place between West 11th Street and Bank Street in the Greenwich Village Historic District. It was originally two row houses, 244 and 246 Waverly Place, that were built in 1886 and designed by William Tuttle, who was part of the Carnegie Hill, Carnegie Hall design team. And the houses have had significant change over time, which we'll look at together. Though they've always had singular ownership, so those changes have been mirrored across both facades at both the front and the rear. So the proposal we'll be discussing with you today is a substantial amount of restoration work at the front facade to bring it back to its historic appearance with some modifications for the new use, including having one parlor level entrance at the north side of the house and having four windows grouped together at the south side of the house at the parlor level. Removing approximately five feet of the rear of the building to allow for more light and air. As you can see, it's quite a deep property. An extension at the rear to bring the rear yard up to the same level of the other rear yards within the donut. And a one-story rooftop addition that is sloped and clad in standing C metal to reference the studio skylight context within the Greenwich Village Historic District. And I'll just note as an introduction to this project that this is a unique site. It's at the end of a block. It's not part of a larger row. It has two exposed side elevations and therefore is freestanding. It's also had a tremendous amount of change, which I referenced before, and we will discuss in more detail. So to go through some historic maps to give you a sense of the history of the site, on the left, we have the 1885 Robinson map before the houses were built and the Waverly Place block on this side terminated with two side elevations of row houses. The site is developed speculatively, these two houses and then three houses across the street in 1886. And this shows the evolution of the volume of the, the property. On the top left, the 1895 Sanborn map shows the original volume of the houses, which was two row houses deep. In 1893, the houses are purchased by Timothy Kiley from the original developer. And he adds in 1896, two extensions at the rear that have projecting bay windows. Timothy Kiley dies and his wife, Margaret, takes over ownership. And she starts housing well, well-educated young women in the house and formally converts the property into apartments. This includes removal of a portion of the party wall and to allow for a central staircase and then adding these two brick extensions that flank that projecting bay construction that Timothy had added. And then I also just have a 1932 I card showing that it was apartment use at the time. And this is just related to the rear yard work. Here is a section through the cellar or the, the basement. The street is here. Here's the areaway. And then in the back is the rear yard. So the way the, the rear yard had worked at this time is that one would exit the basement and then go up a few stairs to the, the yard, which may have been at the level of the rest of the donut at that time. So just so you can visualize all that change we just talked about, the center photo is is the rear elevation, which is not visible from the public thoroughfare. This is a photo taken from the roof of an adjacent property. And so the map on the side shows the 1886 original volume. These two center projecting bays, which you can also see in detail on the side, have been purged, date from 1896. And then the brick elevations on the side date from 1926. And this all comes together as a series of changes that has changed the reading of the rear to something more akin to a small apartment building than to row houses. And then going to the rear yard, top right photo, we're standing in the rear yard looking south. You can see it's quite shallow and it's also quite dark. And this is because these photos from the roof, which you see on the left, looking down, the rear yards to the west of the property are elevated above the rear yard of our property. So part of this proposal is bringing it up to unite with the rest of the donut. So historic photos of what the 1886 design of the house looked like. We had two stoops that led to parlor level doors with pedimented door hoods that were likely wood. There was an areaway with this very handsome fence that has circle patterns. The parlor level windows and the second floor windows had transoms with multi-light sash that appear to be clear glazing based on our analysis of the historic photos. There were terracotta spandrels between the second and third floor. And I think architecturally, interesting for our project, there, there's this amazing horizontal banding that stretched across both houses. And you'll also notice that Tuttle designed this reveal that stretches from the top of the parlor level to the cornice that creates separation at that level, but then the, the parlor level is all in the same plane, which I think is architecturally interesting for this project. So 1959 is when the big change happens. If anybody's ever Googled this building, you get the Daytona article and the title of that article is disfigured. And it's because of this 1959 change. There was actually an application at DOB to replace the front facade and the rear facade, but that was pulled back. But there's still, there's been a substantial amount of change. So this includes infilling of the areaway, removal of both stoops and doors, installation of new doors in various places that don't represent historic locations, shifting of the parlor levels, moving up the sills at both the parlor level and the, the second floor, removing a lot of the horizontal bandings such as sill courses and string courses, and the installation of through-wall louvers. And then just showing from 1985 to 2024, some other changes that have happened were removal of nonhistoric shutters and the removal of the coating from the facade. And just some details of the facade, so you can see this up close. We luckily have remnants of the historic areaway fencing, which we're using for the restoration work at this secondary entrance on the south side of the building. You can see where the historic fabric was removed and we have non-matching brick that has been used to infill. We also have the infilled areaway windows and then just sort of the, the remnants of the horizontal coursing throughout. And you can also see in detail the through-wall louvers that were installed. And here's an existing elevation at the middle. And you can just see that all these changes have really taken away a lot of that row house character from the composition by removing the banding and then installing what feels like a primary door and a secondary door, which removes that double row house character from the composition. Also note that the primary door breaks that reveal line that was supposed to be sort of this secret space between 244 and 246 and overlaps with it. And here we just have excellent historic fabric that we're using to inform the restoration work, including terracotta banding, rough-hewn brownstone, the terracotta spandrels, and the areaway ironwork, which will be used for the new areaway windows. and the areaway ironwork, which will be used for the new areaway windows. So here we have existing on the left, proposed on the right. This includes re-establishing an areaway with one stoop and a door, a wood door hood. New restoring the historic location of the parlor-level windows at the northern part of the house, doing a group of four windows to match the historic configuration of the parlor-level windows at the south side of the house, and then restoration work above, bringing back historic window configuration and all-in-kind material replacement. And here are just some details of that restoration work. We used historic photos to study carefully the detailing of everything and as well as existing historic fabric. The windows will be wood with metal cladding. And here's a detail of the ganged opening. This was studied very carefully to be centered below the reveal at the south side of the house and to have the same distance from this reveal as the historic parlor level, so that there's a symmetry on both sides. Existing and proposed areaway work on the left, we have the existing and proposed sidewalk plan. I'll note that the stoop, the new stoop will have four steps. The historic photo showed five steps, but they were quite steep. So to avoid going deeper into the sidewalk, the stoop will have four steps instead of five. And here's a section through the areaway. There'll be one set of stairs that go to a secondary door at the north side. And then the floor slab for the parlor level is actually aligned right here. So we have a shadow box condition above two windows in the areaway. This transom condition will have that same grill work that we saw at this existing areaway opening. And then just some details to show what that areaway will look like. So we have the extent historic areaway fence at the secondary entrance that we're using to restore then for the new areaway fencing. Unfortunately, it doesn't meet code, both in height and spacing. So we've expanded it to be taller and we've added the four-inch spaced pickets behind inboard of the design. But the new railing will be steel and bronze, just as the existing railing is. And now I'll pass it on to Juliette to talk about the rear and the roof, and I'll come back for the visibility.
Thank you. So here we have the existing rear facade on the left and the proposed on the right. The existing rear facade reads as one singular apartment building and not two separate row houses. Although the new facade will be in a different plane from the existing facade, we wanted to reference the historic changes to the volume of the house by reconstructing the top-floor geometry. And that's evidenced by the geometry of the bay windows at the top floor of the existing volume with some contemporary nods in the form of these Juliette balconies. The materiality of the rear facade, we're planning to match the existing brick and provide bluestone copings. The addition will be zinc-clad panels, separate and distinct from the existing house volume and referencing studio additions. Anthracite steel surrounds will create distinct areas where design work is happening. The frames around the proposed new windows will have some depth that act as reveal surrounding the intervention and separating it from the brick to make it a distinct volume. Here we have the north elevation, the existing on the left and the proposed on the right. It illustrates the slope of the rooftop addition, which references the Studio Skylight and serves the practical nature of a stair bulkhead. Also visible is the FDNY required ladder to meet fire access code requirements. Existing north facade has two nonhistoric window openings that we will be infilling and we will be adding new window opening on the second floor. The south elevation, again existing on the left, proposed on the right. We have many existing infilled window openings on the existing volume, which will remain infilled and the leftover sills will remain in place. And we will be adding one new opening on the second floor and three on the current basement level. The existing building section here shows the existing rear yard, again, as Sarah mentioned, sunken and dark and undersized. The large red volume to the left illustrates the extent that we will extend the rear yard. And the smaller volume at the front of the building illustrates the reintroduction of the areaway at the existing basement level. Note, the building has no cellar currently. So as you'll see on the next slide, what we're doing is expanding the basement and introducing a cellar. So here we have the section showing the expanded rear yard, the expanded basement level, and the new cellar below it. This also shows the rooftop addition setback. It's a one-story addition with a stair bulkhead that is specifically placed and designed not to be visible from immediately across the street. None of the building, oops, pardon me, which you'll see in the upcoming mock-up photos. Here we have an exist, sorry, a proposed and existing basement level plans and cellar level plans with the existing footprint outlined in red, so you can see the extent of that basement enlargement. The accentometric representations are here to just summarize the proposed scope of work. So here we have the existing as viewed from the north and the proposed as viewed from the north. The existing viewed from the south and the proposed. And then here we have views from the rear, again, the existing and the proposed. You can see that the rear yard, existing on a metric view, illustrates the existing yard is lower than the adjacent yards and it's quite small, resulting from the addition that Sarah mentioned. The intervention will, as you can see in this slide, extend the rear yard to allow more light and air into the house and the new yard again raised to be more aligned with the plane of the donut. With that, I will pass it back to Sarah.
Thank you. So we have two exposed side elevations. Anything we put on the roof will be visible to a certain extent. So we started, you know, thought about what the commission has previously found appropriate in scenarios where there's inevitable visibility. So, and in Greenwich Village, that is usually based on the model of the Studio Skylights that were, you know, proliferated around the Greenwich Village in the teens and twenties. So we have a historic photo of a Studio Skylight over an exposed side elevation on the left, not at a rowhouse scale, but on a studio building. And then two somewhat recent projects at 65 Horatio and 45 Horatio, where we had visible contemporary additions that were based on the Studio Skylight model. So we built a mock-up and as Juliette mentioned, this was designed to not be visible in connection with the front facade. So at the front facade, we have no visibility. Also along West 11th Street, we have no visibility. And then when we go to the corner of Waverly and West 11th Street, we start seeing a little bit of the visibility of the rooftop addition, which you can see right here. And then if you go right adjacent to the house and look up over the side elevation, you can see that sloped expression, which is specifically designed to relate to the Studio Skylight precedent with a standing seams zinc cladding. Going again, right next to the building from the north, looking south, the visibility of the sloped stair bulkhead and addition over the side elevation. But again, just separated from the front facade. You're only getting a little hint of the front facade when you're viewing this visibility. And then stepping back along Bank Street, this is the only view where we can also see the FDNY ladder with its required per code. And again, that visibility is mitigated by the slope and the differentiation in materiality between the new addition and the brick sidewall. And then just to summarize, a reminder of the unique context. This is a block contest, this is context, this is Waverly looking west. This caps the end of the block. It's freestanding with two exposed side elevations, not part of a larger row. It's situated between an apartment building and the side of a rowhouse. We also have an existing building that has been disfigured, as the Daytona noted, and has lost a lot of its rowhouse character over time. And the proposal brings back that design intent of the front facade, restores missing facade elements, the original window configuration, and that essential horizontal banding. And its rear facade is brought back closer to its original depth with a new vision of how it is designed, and it's also now visible. The rear yard becomes part of the block's donut and the rooftop addition has been designed to be as invisible as possible, understanding that given the unique conditions, there will always be some visibility. And that's the project. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. All right, any questions, Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
I was just trying to make sure I understood. There's a section of the existing and proposed. Is the rear facade staying in plan where the existing is? Or is that being shifted somehow?
The rear facade is...
Yeah, can you just go to the section 22, 23? 23.
So 23, the red dotted line is the existing volume.
And you're cutting back?
Cutting it back, yes, to get light and air into the house.
And then you're recreating this balcony up at the top?
The top floor, the top floor is being recreated from, like the projecting bays are being recreated and the brick facade is being recreated.
The whole rear facade is a new facade?
Yeah, the whole thing's new. It's just being rebuilt. It's not being rebuilt exactly the same, but it's inspired by what is existing.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Conceptually, you're, there are two buildings back in 1940. Then it was changed. And you want to make it now just one building, one facade? That's the concept?
Well, I would argue that right now it reads as one facade. And what we're doing is we're making into a single-family home that has more of the scale of the rowhouse architecture. Because previously, the, that change that happened in 59 got rid of a lot of the integrity as two sets of rowhouses because of the way the openings shifted, both the doors, but then the windows. You can see that the sills were lifted up at both the parlor level and the second floor. And those, that squatness of the windows doesn't read as a rowhouse. So part of that restoration work really brings back the rowhouse.
So you're making one facade?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, Commissioner Ginsburg.
Looking at this facade, obviously there's infill brick. What do you, but in your proposed facade, there doesn't seem to be, I realize some of it's being removed for windows and door. But what's happening to the rest of it? Are you replacing it? Are you painting it?
Yes, the, well, all the mismatched brick will be replaced with new brick to match the existing brick better, to the best extent possible. And then any new brick that needs to be replaced will be replaced as needed to also match the existing brick. And all terracotta, new terracotta will be done with terracotta in kind as well. And you'll see we have the, we have to get rid of the through-wall louvers and do in-kind terracotta spandrels. And then these bands will be created in terracotta as well or cast stone to match brownstone where needed.
Vice Chair Bland.
Probably I know the answer, it's an interior layout issue. But what caused you to put the bulkhead on the side that's most visible as opposed to up against the taller building?
Yeah, so from a practical standpoint, there's an active alleyway over here where trash goes in and out all day and it's the service entrance to the apartment building to the south. And on this side is the Waverly Inn backyard space. So having the circulation on that side to separate the living rooms from, or the bedrooms from something that's active at night outside was sort of the practical sense. But I'll just note in the, in the visibility studies, we barely see the top part of this bulkhead. It's just for a moment in time that you're catching it and otherwise the visibility would be equal amongst the two sides of the addition.
Other questions? All right, we're going to move to public testimony and we'll come back to you. All right, we do have some people who've signed up, so I'm going to start with Barbara Jaffe.
My name is Barbara Jaffe. I've lived at 240 Waverly Place since 1969. I'm appalled at the way this application for major construction in a landmark neighborhood has been handled. It would appear that it was done behind closed doors. Neighbors in affected buildings were not notified in any overt way with enough lead time to prepare a proper response. The massive addition to the roof, at least another story higher, can be seen from the street even now with only the simple wooden mock-up currently in place. Once the permanent solid construction with a roof is installed, it will be even more intrusive. As it states in the Community Board Letter Two, Community Board Two Letter 24446 Waverly Place Application Line K, quote, "The extensive rooftop addition, that is more clearly visible from a public thoroughfare than the degree usually permitted in Greenwich Village," end quote. Let it be noted that the CB2 did not make any recommendations regarding the additions to the roof. And this, I don't know if this is important or not, but I noticed, by the way, on their diagram, is they neglected to add the existing windows on the 240 building facing 244. This will affect 12 tenants with two to four windows each on that side, plus the ones in the garden apartment. This is just deliberate misleading information. Maybe it's always done this way, I don't know. The other very alarming aspect of this is the excavation of 14 feet under the building for a sub-c cellar and 22 feet in the back. This will erode the soil under the foundations of 240 Waverly and the Waverly Inn. This will likely pose a destabilizing effect on both buildings and cause serious structural issues that endanger all of us who live in these two buildings, both of which are over 100 years old. And I'm sure that a lot of you will remember that this has happened before, buildings that have collapsed because they did too much digging. In connection to this, it appears that they're narrowing the sidewalk with the sub-basement windows and grill. The changes to the facade, the roof, the sidewalk, all change the look of the building in major ways. And with the excavation, potentially endanger all of us who live there. In addition, and this may be minor to you, it would appear they're also removing a tree plot from in front of the building. Landmark designations as opposed to uphold the architectural character of the neighborhood. I think this one destroys it. Thank you very much.
Marian Block, I live at 240 Waverly. I had previously submitted testimony online, but I wanted to add what I subsequently learned, which is all about Community Board Two, their meeting and that we were not given the opportunity to express our opinions or ask questions. Still, recommendations were made by the board. I can't help but feel this project has been rushed through the system before we were given a chance to study the issues. I want to stress the size of the proposed addition to the roof, which will affect our neighborhood and not in any good way. It will be visible every time I walk down the street where I've lived for over 40 years. This is a historic district. Changes like this should not be permitted. It's not preserving the architectural order of the neighborhood. It's a bad thing for my neighbors and for me personally and my neighborhood. And I live next door, the potential to be clearly the extensive excavations, which will be miserable for me and the whole block. And I'll bring up, just like Barbara did, the trees because they really contribute to the beauty of our street, just as much as any architectural detail. And they help nurture nature and all the things that are important. So please don't allow these massive changes to proceed. Assuming a compromise can... Assuming a compromise can be reached, that will be acceptable to all.
Thank you. And the next person who signed in is, and forgive me if I can't read the handwriting, Philip Tugendreich. Tugendreich, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak. I'm here under somewhat unusual circumstances. I live at five fifty West Forty-Fifth Street. I was told about this application a week ago. A very, very close friend told me about Marian and this application. And the reason I'm here in person is because I'm going to ask you for help with staggering difference in resources and ability that's brought to the table on this application. I think they need some extra help. The, found out, I know this place very well, I've been going there since something seventy-eight, that the application landmarks had been filed. There were four items that were asked for. I said, wow, that's heavy. I said, Marian told me what they were. I said, okay, that's a flex, that's impressive. And then I said, who are the consultants? Just give me a clue. Said, an architecture firm, which I wasn't familiar with, and then Higgins and Quasbar. And I went, opened my phone and said, oh, this is not going to go well here with Marian up against them. I said, so what have we got? First thing you have is that the request to dig down and dig down fast. In New York City real estate, that's like to know itself. It'll be a pain in the neck for anyone living anywhere near them, certainly their neighbors and so forth. However, it's a reasonable thing to do, it's something that you should look at. Engineering types will deal with that, and I've dealt with it before, I understand that. Although I'm worried about the inequality, some of my best friends are rich people. I think we should be nice to them. I think they're really good for New York City, and I think that's a good, so that's okay, you do that. Then, there's an addition to the rear yard in the Greenwich Village Historic. Historically, this is odd, it's my experience, but okay. I defer to you, you guys do this while they want. The other thing that was interesting was the facades, two facades that appear to be allowed to be changed, and I want to be somewhat serious about this, but there's also some humor in there. My experience is that this, you know, this body is famous for torturing people with facade. So it seemed to get up in the morning, and that's what you do, and then you have lunch, and you keep going, it's great. However, I did know some people my age who went in for applications when we were young, we got a school, an architecture school, and they became bent and broken over one million or, you know, one particular window. Fine, that's happened. Okay, that's again, I would purty, but then you get to this pop-up. That affects me. I walk around down there, affects them, it's too much. So what I'm asking for, in this situation where it is, I mean, they weren't able to go to the, for whatever reason, I don't think it was evil, but they didn't get to the community board, you have in front of you something that says approved, and that's just not indicative of what I'm doing.
I'm terribly sorry. You have, the three minutes have expired.
Looking for your help, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ray Mortensen.
Thank you. Do you hear me okay? Okay. I am a resident, and my wife and I have owned twenty-four Bank Street, which is around the corner from the proposed project, for since two thousand and eight, I think, so quite some time. We've been in the village for longer than that, since the eighties. And the neighborhood is, this is going into the general comments, I have two specific, one specific thing and this general thing. The general thing is the change in the character of the neighborhood. And the neighborhood of, particularly the last ten years, has become, it's empty, there's no one there, dark at night, nothing. And here we have an apartment building that has twelve units with friendly people and nice people, and it's a democratic neighborhood, and we have enjoyed that, and that's why my wife and I moved to the neighborhood thirty years ago. That seems to be changing, and a house like this is part of that change. I don't think there would have been anything like the proposed project in existence in the nineteenth century. I don't think, there might have been two townhouses, but not a massive structure, this one giant townhouse. That's the general comment. The specific comments concern the structure on the roof, which is clearly visible from the street. The mock-up can be seen very easily from the street as it stands now. And the other question I have aesthetically, I think the drawings look nice, and the idea is nice, and I appreciate all of that, but the areaway in the front where they're going to go down, I don't see that in the neighborhood at all. That's kind of an English basement, I guess. So I don't quite know what the purpose of that is, or why they would pursue that. The sidewalk is only ten feet wide, there's a lamppost that's seven feet away, if they come in four feet, I don't know where the property line is, maybe it's legal, but it doesn't seem to me in character of the neighborhood.
Thank you very much. All right, is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on this item? Okay, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Kala to see if we have any additional remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. We have a few hands raised in our attendees list. The first we'll be hearing from is Dina Task-Winter from Village Preservation. Dina Task-Winter, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dina Task-Winter, speaking for Village Preservation. Village Preservation has strong concerns about several aspects of this proposal. Numbers two forty-four and two forty-six Waverly Place were designed as two houses in the Romanesque Revival style in eighteen eighty-six. Though they share a common facade, historically, they have always had two distinct entrances. They originally each featured parlor-level entrances at the outer corners of the buildings, with stoops and bracketed pediments bookending the houses. While we are pleased to see this historic feature restored at number two forty-six, the complete removal of any entrance at two forty-four will lead to the false impression that this was always one house. The configuration of the primary facade was also always that of pairs, two houses, two entrances, and two sets of paired windows. And so the interruption of a grouping of four windows at the parlor level not only erases the history of an entryway being located there, but it interrupts the intended fenestration pattern of the facade. Though the buildings were stripped of many of their historic features prior to designation, and we appreciate the return of select historic elements, we find the proposed work to be inappropriate unless the proposal is modified to incorporate some recollection of the second entrance and retention of the paired window configuration. We also feel that other aspects of the design need to be revised. The details of the proposed areaway ironwork do not match that of the historic fence upon which they are based. In the nineteen forties tax photographs, the pickets do not extend into the circular cutouts. The top rail had a rounded profile with multiple scroll details, and the fence itself is interrupted by central openings and by the stoops on either end, whereas the proposed fence extending all the way to the south end of the building further inaccurately would imply that there was no second entrance there. We also find the proposed reconstruction of the rear facade to introduce far too much glazing, destroying the original solid-to-void ratio and spacing of the historic facade. And the proposed rooftop addition is far too visible. We ask that the proposed addition be re-studied and its visual impact substantially reduced. Finally, we are concerned about the extent of excavation proposed and the worrying impact that it may have, not only on these structures, but on the foundations of the historic buildings on either side. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. The Victorian Society supports the changes proposed for the areaway and front facade at two forty-four Waverly. However, the rooftop addition, removal of the entire rear facade, and construction of a new rear facade are inappropriate, as shown. These must be reconsidered. Under other circumstances, we might object to alteration to the front facade of the pair of row houses, which create the impression that they were built as one structure. However, we support this proposal for several reasons. The ground floor at two-two-four floors were so significantly altered prior to designation that they no longer appear to be two buildings. Because they're not part of a homogeneous row, changes to the front will not contrast with identical buildings next door. They're on a street with a variety of building types, flanked by the modern garden pavilion of a restaurant facing Bank Street, and a small, early twentieth-century apartment building. And finally, replicating and extending many extant historic details will create a pleasant and coherent composition. The proposed excavations to create new areaways will not destroy any historic paving materials. We're happy to see the new iron fence will replicate the materials, details, and black painted finish of a small section of historic fencing still in place. We are also happy to see that the applicants have integrated the proposed design of the new four-part window on the ground floor into the overall design by centering it under the projecting windows on the second and third floors and replicating the muntan patterns. The new string course under the ground floor windows will echo the string courses on the upper floors. The restoration of the entrance stoop, porch, and door to the right of the facade is commendable. However, the proposed rooftop addition is too large and visible. The proposed zinc panels don't relate in any way to the historic materials and emphasize the addition's mass. It should be pulled back from the parapets and significantly reduced in size. At the rear, we find the removing of the entire ninety-eight-year-old facade with its even older oriel windows is not appropriate. Finally, the design of the proposed rear facade feels unresolved. The masonry cladding and paired bay windows on the top floor are balanced above a void, filled with frameless glass without details or distinction. We know from the front facade, this team can design an integrated facade. They need to use those same skills here at the rear. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic Districts Council. Lucy Levine, I've promoted you to panelist. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic Districts Council. HTC largely appreciates the scope, design, and detailing of this scheme, but in the rear, we find the proposed proportion of glass to be excessive and the loss of the reading of these two buildings to be inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note for the record that Manhattan Community Board Two recommends approval of the front facade restoration as a welcome return of the house to a reasonable modification of this historic design, approval of the rear extension and facade modifications, and the lotline window reconfiguration, and approval of the extensive excavation and underpining provided that LPC receives assurances that proper engineering studies have been carried out, and that all regulations are observed so that the integrity of the house or adjacent properties is not compromised. We also received additional letters from three individuals recommending denial, which was shared with the Commissioners. And with that, I'll bring it back to Chair Carroll.
Thank you. And before I turn back to the applicants, I do want to just note that safety of historic buildings is a top priority for this commission, and we have enhanced engineering reviews in place for applications such as this with excavation and removals. And so this application has been reviewed by the LPC engineer, Don Friedman from Old Structures, and has been signed off on that, and will continue to coordinate with the Department of Buildings. But please feel free to also speak to the safety measures that you are undertaking, as well as respond to any other comments we've heard.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody's testimony. I think that, you know, the diversity of opinions on the front, I think, you know, reflects how we approach this. Like, it's not a straightforward preservation decision. There's lots of different ways for this design to be appropriate, but we felt, given the existing conditions and the loss of the character of this as two separate row houses, allowed some appropriate flexibility for turning this into a single-family home. And, you know, similar to the comments that the Victorian Society had, we feel that this composition brings it back closer to its original design intent. And I think William Tuttle, who, you know, did the Shinazi Mansion and Carnegie Hall, would, you know, would be proud of this design. Going to the rear of the prop, well, actually, just to touch on one comment that Village Preservation had, the intent is for this to match the historic with code adjustments. So we're happy to work with staff to ensure that that all works together and that we're getting the detailing right where it needs to be right. In terms of the rear, as I described, this facade has been changed multiple times for a variety of practical purposes. And so this practical purpose of allowing more light and air into the rear is just part of that continuing narrative of the house. I think that the scale of the windows does get lost a little bit because of the reading of the gray metal, which is actually quite substantial. If you see at the top, we have the brick pier that carries down into the metal so that that same solidity is provided at that second floor level to divide the two facades. And then at the bottom, we have the glazed opening, though that is, the majority of that is behind the fence and is part of the private base of the rear yard. And then in terms of the rooftop addition, the floor-to-ceiling height of that addition is only eight and a half feet. It's a very modest ask for an addition, which is regularly approved in Greenwich Village. We tried everything we could do to get the DOB to not want, to not require a stair bulkhead above, but it is required per code to access the mechanical units at the top. But we feel that this is modest, and it's set back fifteen feet from the front facade so that it won't be visible from the, over the top of the building from the front. And, yeah, and as Chair Carroll mentioned, Incor Engineering is our structural engineers. They're on Zoom if there's specific questions about that, but we are a part of the enhanced engineering review process at DOB and LPC, and will be complying with all of those requirements. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, any final questions? Right, yes, Commissioner Goldblum.
If the, what's the reason for cutting back the back facade of the house? Is that for code?
It's not code light and air, but it's not code light and air, right? It's just, it's just light and air in general, because it's quite a deep property. The existing rear yard is in existing non-compliance. We are cutting it back to a compliant depth.
But would you be required to do so?
Strictly speaking, no. But we feel it's the right thing to do to bring sufficient light and air into the house because the existing depth is quite narrow.
Because you don't get your thirty feet otherwise? Is that what you mean?
Well, thirty feet is not required at this, in this location. There is a allowable reduction of depth of the rear yard that's calculated based on the, because the, our site is less than, sorry, the code is a little complicated. There's a calculation based on how you're allowed to reduce your rear yard a certain amount per depth of your site. And we, this is the calculated depth. It's about fifteen feet, actually. You're not required to have a thirty-foot depth here.
Okay.
How deep is the rear yard with this change?
It's approximately fifteen feet. Okay, sorry.
So it's an existing non-compliant condition, but if you alter an existing non-compliant, you have to bring it to code, to existing compliance? Is that?
Which, right, which is what we're doing.
That's why you're chopping a piece off? So, because you've altered the window openings and everything?
Yes.
You didn't want to keep the existing facade openings?
That's right. The existing facade is in quite a bit of disrepair.
And do you know what date that rear facade is from?
It's a combination of eighteen ninety-six and eighteen twenty-six. So the eighteen ninety-six part of those projecting bays at the center, and the nineteen twenty-six are the brick, are the brick facades flanking the projecting bays. Pushed out to the photo.
It was pushed out, flanking the bays. One minute.
Let her just see it again. And we have a little map here. So this shows you the three generations of construction.
Got it. Okay.
You got it?
Great, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Ginsburg.
I'd just point out, with the passage of the city of Yes, buildings under seventy-five feet only require a twenty-foot rear yard. So the thirty-foot is above seventy-five and twenty below. So that thirty-foot is no longer sacrosanct in lower buildings also. But what they're talking But what they're talking about is in, in shallow lots, you're allowed to reduce the depth of the rear yard. Right.
Okay. Any other final questions? All right, let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Ginsberg, would you make a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldblum, would you second that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so this, uh, hearing is closed and we're going to begin our discussion on this proposal, um, which, uh, is for these two houses, which are essentially freestanding, um, with exposed, uh, side facades on a varied block with an apartment building on one side and the side of an, a row house on the other side. And, um, this, this buildings had been altered in the past, resulting in the removal of their stoops and fenestration. And, uh, there have been changes at the rear facade as well. The proposal, as we've seen, is for the restoration of many components on the front facade, um, to, well, the proposal is to combine the two buildings into a single family house and that on the front will, uh, involve restoration of many components and then to address the the, uh, single family use, it'll have a single family, a single stoop. And, uh, a below grade door on the other side within an area way and fenestration has been introduced that um, on one side matches the historic and on the other side, uh, has a relationship to the historic windows. Um, the proposal also includes the rooftop addition, um, which is visible over the side facades and sloped to evoke a skylight. And it has an additional bulkhead on top. And the cutting back of the rear facade with the new rear facade design and the excavation. And I would say that this commission has approved combining two row houses into single family houses in the past. And many of the design, uh, comments that we have and the requirements that we ultimately have in our approvals are to, uh, ensure that the building retains a sense of their, the two buildings retain a sense of individuality and distinction from one another. So that it's legible that they were once two buildings. Sometimes that requires or has involved a false door on one of the buildings. In this case, the applicant and as well as some of the testimony we heard talked about this group of buildings being different because they're not part of a row. So that could be something that one could consider here. But in terms of actually the front facades, rear facades and rooftop additions, we've looked for design moves that would respect the individuality, individuality of the houses. So I think that's enough context to get us started. Vice Chair Bland, would you like to start this one?
Um, I think architecturally, there's much to be lauded by this scheme. Socially, I'm not so convinced, but that's not our, that's not our purview. Uh, but I did want to at least say that. I think we're human beings up here. Part of a city that is trying to find ways of having more housing, not less. But that said, uh, and back to the relevancy, um, I think a lot of, of what's being proposed here is, um, is appropriate. I asked the question earlier about the bulkhead being on what I think is still probably the wrong side of the building. I don't know what would cause it, uh, or what, um, drastic reorientation of an interior layout would be required to move it. I'm not suggesting it really must be moved for me to, uh, to approve it. I just still note that. It's not highly visible, uh, according to the, um, uh, visibility drawings that you did. I do think setting it back, however, a little bit, I think one of the, um, people who testified suggested a set, a slight setback would help, uh, the bulkhead. The rear, can we, can we look at the rear, uh, facade? Yeah, um, I think the, the rear, again, I've forgotten, is it visible from the public way or not?
Not visible.
Not, not, that's what I thought. Therefore, I think we can be, you know, more, um, flexible about that. But I think it's, it's too open at the, at the, at the bottom. It's, I think many have noted that already and let others note further. But I would suggest that typically we would have that, um, centerpiece, the, uh, the, 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 the glass not extending across, um, both, uh, buildings. At, at least maybe, maybe a little bit more, uh, definition to that rear facade as would be in order. Otherwise, um, I, I think, um, I think it's, it's okay.
Commissioner Chapin? Yes, Commissioner Chapin.
Thanks. Yeah, um, normally I would look for more division on the front of a building, but, um, in this case, the testimony of the Victorian Society, and I went through a lot of the points that are make me feel that more comfortable in approving their approach to the front. Because of the changes over time, um, the details that they are returning. So I think I can feel comfortable with that. I feel like the, um, rooftop addition seems kind of looming and that it needs to be reduced in some fashion or pulled back. It, it just seems, you know, kind of really, um, a little bit too, a little, too much. And I think that the, uh, the rear is, is just so much glass at the bottom, it's undivided and it seems sort of undistinguished. I mean, you look at the original and the original looks a lot better than the, uh, current approach. So I, I think somewhere work needs to be done on that and I will let the, the architects comment on, on that, uh, aspect. But I, I'm just not very comfortable with its, uh, current presentation. But in general, I, I can support the application.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Letfy.
So there's a, a lot of things to, uh, to praise about this project. You know, the, uh, the facade of the building was extremely, it's like decimated in a way. And conceptually, what's happening here is a good thing. You know, all of that mismatched brick is going to be replaced. There's a, you know, real effort to bring back the character of the original two buildings. Uh, the concept for the fence is wonderful and I agree that it's important to work with staff on the details. And, uh, the work that they're doing on the area way makes sense in terms of, you know, materials, et cetera. But I do have to say that I, you know, the, the the West Village is a very, uh, sort of small, it's a neighborhood with, there are, um, lots of apartment buildings and changes, sometimes changes in scale. But there is this sense that it's a neighborhood of, you know, small townhouses and brownstones. And I think what's happening on the front facade is that we lost that. And we do, as, uh, you said, Sarah, we do make it a point, uh, generally to, uh, to have the appearance of two, two distinct buildings and two distinct entrances. And I, uh, even though there's a gesture, uh, above the entryway, you know, the first floor level, the ground floor level toward that. I, I think there should, I would recommend that there be another statement, maybe a false store. So that it really does read, that might, that might, you know, read as two buildings. Maybe it will require a slight change in the windows, but I think it would probably work well without, uh, taking away from the applicant's intent with the project. On the rear facade, I happen to, um, agree with my fellow commissioners that there's just too much glazing. And even though on the, um, what was here before, there were a lot of, you know, there are more individual windows, there's not, you know, the fabric of the brick is still more present. So my recommendation would be on the first two floors that, that glazing is reduced and that the design is just, uh, I don't know, a little more coherent. To me, it doesn't, the first floor doesn't speak to the second floor and the whole thing doesn't speak to the top floor. So I would recommend that as well. And then finally, I do agree with the recommendations about setting back, setting back the addition on the top to reduce the size of the bulk.
Commissioner Chu.
Okay, um, I think, can we go to the front facade slide? Is that possible?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Can you speak louder?
Can you move to the front facade comparison?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks. Um, so in terms of the front facade and the proposed work being done, I do feel that considering the amount of, uh, defacing that happened to the existing or to the historic facade, that what's being proposed is an improvement. We're talking about the sense of two versus one. I do think that the applicant has made the case in the original design of the building that there was some sense of unification at the ground floor. So there is some precedent to what's being proposed and not doing a false entry on the left. I, I do feel and understand the intent of trying to retain the separateness, but I wonder whether or not creating a false entry feels, uh, uh, too much of a gesture to, towards something that doesn't exactly work with any of what's going on in the building and in its current use. So I could find this proposal for the facade, the masonry portion, uh, acceptable. In terms of the addition, since we're looking at this image, I do feel that overall the addition on the roof is out of scale for the, the, the existing structure below. And I do think that there are ways to improve that. I would, I would attempt to push the addition back from the facade as was suggested. Looking at the section in the plans, it seems like that is possible. The height could be looked at. It, it's close to ten, seven floor to floor, floor to floor, which I think could come down a little bit. I also think that the recommendation that was made earlier to try to shift the stair to the upper level to the other side is also possible. I looked at the floor plan. I understand the applicant's cons- desire to keep the stair vertical on that one side of the building. However, the condition we're most concerned is, is the access to the top top. Um, and that probably is not a frequent access of trash coming from the roof. If you just mirror the existing, the, the proposed plan, you could easily do that and it's just a corridor walk to this, to the other stair. And I, as I said, I do think you could push it back as well and still accommodate the stair coming up from the top existing floor to the penthouse addition. I, I'm also a little concerned if we move to, could you please go to the rear facade? Okay. So the rear is being affected, affected drastically. We did talk about the lack of visibility here. I think in terms of mass, the mass has been reduced, which might be a positive to neighbors here. It's gotten a little smaller. How appropriate it is, the applicant's decision to do so, I think is guided by also a desire to re-facade this side and, and altering windows required some, um, cutting of, of the plan back. However, I do feel that, again, the biggest issue to me is the sense of scale. And I feel that it's lost a sense of the scale of this design by introducing this massive double height opening at the bottom. It also confuses the upper from the lower. I feel like there's three, three sections of elevation. The, the large opening, the balconies, and then the addition above. And it's lost its cohesiveness. I also feel that the lack of masonry has also drastically affected the, the sense of scale is also proportions here of what's masonry and what's glass. I do think that something could be done, having an upper two stories that reflected the separation of the two structures like the front could be looked at. And frankly, I looked at the plan and the ground floor has a column in the middle of it. So any unity here has really got a column behind it. So you could simply just bring the wall straight down as the party wall that exists and that would still create a sense of division and maybe alter the second floor. So I do think there's ways minute, with minimal effect to the interior planning to, to, to revise this. Last point I do want to make is that I do feel that the rooftop, we've been talking about the front. And it, I does make me a, a little uncomfortable when I look at it, that, that the addition on the top is literally up against the rear of the, the masonry facade. I do realize it's a new facade, but again, this to me affects the sense of scale and mass of the building's structure. I want us to also as a commission think about, and I know we all think about it, but a lot of, a lot of proposals are looked at from the perspective of how visible it is, but to me, it's not how appropriate something is not necessarily judged by how visible it is. Visibility can change with time with the city changing as well. So I do think that the application has a nice approach to the front because it does restore this essence of the historic facade and I commend that because what's there now is, is, is quite bad. But I do think they need to relook at these other proposals around. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Master.
Yes, I'll start with the front facade. I agree with, uh, Commissioner Chapin, um, who noted how eloquent the Victorian Society was in their, um, praise of the front facade. And for those reasons as well, I find that the front facade is acceptable. In terms of, uh, the rooftop bulkhead, um, I think all of the commissioners have noted that it's, uh, um, too visible and I believe it is visible from the, the north side. So, um, I would have them work with staff to find a solution and I'm not quite sure what the solution is, but, but at this point, I think it's, um, too visible. In terms of the excavation, I know that it seems overwhelming and, um, it was mentioned in the public testimony. However, um, I think we have done excavations, um, of this nature before. Um, and given that we have, um, you know, an expanded, you know, set of oversight, um, I think that's acceptable. In terms of the rear facade, um, I understand that some of the commissioners find that the glass, um, is overwhelming. Um, however, um, I note that it's not visible. And I liked the, uh, solution that Commissioner Bland had proposed, which is that the masonry pier go all the way down to the ground. And I think that would, um, um, solve some of the, um, issues in terms of having a little bit more separation, um, and reducing some of the, the, um, the glass. So overall, I can find it acceptable, appropriate.
Thank you. Commissioner Jefferson.
Uh, if you, if you could go back to the front facade. So I think the front facade is appropriate with comments. One of those is that the, the base, then you have the middle section, then you have the top. And the, the, the base kind of works, but except for the doorway. The entry seems kind of pushed to the corner. It feels subordinate to the, the proportion of it should be studied, I think. The middle portion is really lovely, beautifully done. It's, works really well. The roof should be, the, the penthouse should be simplified to kind of work with the, with simplification of this facade, but it's almost there. And you go to the rear facade. And you go to the rear facade. The rear facade is interesting because the existing has, A, 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 had a rhythm. And they removed the rhythm on this one, only on the top they kept it. If they could go back and use solid and voyage and kept the rhythm somewhat, it would, would work. It would work for me much better than that amount of glass that says modern and, you know, donut. Correct wall. And then I think the way they handled the top, the top floor is fine. And so combination of buildings appropriate. Modified side facade is appropriate. And excavation of cell is appropriate.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Goldblum.
Thanks. Interesting project. I, I agree with the testimony about the problematic nature of, of what we do every week, which is allow for the consolidation of multifamily buildings into single family ones. And that's certainly not getting us in the right direction. But as Fred noted, that's not in our scope, unfortunately. The front facade work, I, I agree with everybody else. I think the buildings have been modified sufficiently to support a renovation that creatively recreates some historic elements into what we'll read as a single building. I think that that's already been done ham handedly by the, the, the current renovation. And I think that the proposal rectifies that while keeping the building reading as a single entity. I think that the, the rooftop addition, I, I'm not an expert on, on, on where the stair, where, where the rooftop stair is, is required. But my guess is that if you move the AC off the roof and put it, let's say, on the lower roof or in the backyard, then you might not have to access that roof with a stair that you might be able to get by with a ladder. Mark would probably know better than me, but that's my feeling, my understanding. In any event, I agree with everyone else's comments that the, that the rooftop structure is, is too visible and that it should, it, it must be set back from the, from the, the rear facade. Now, the rear facade for me poses a problem that is less about the extent of the glass and more about the cutback. This is kind of the opposite of what we usually see, which is when someone wants to extend. Here, you have a pair of buildings that whose rear facades face the center of the donut. And yes, they do have a shallow current rear yard, but they have plenty of actual, if not legal, light and air facing into the, into the donut. So what I'm concerned about is the wholesale removal of an 1896 facade. We protect the physical volume of townhouses every week. And we do that by retaining the top floor at the very least of the original volume. Now, we're not in a position to restore to the 1886 volume, which is the original volume, and it's not visible currently. But I would argue that we have protected 1896 buildings with greater vigor many, many, many times. And so for me, the cutback of the entire facade is problematic. And I could not support that. I think that if they were to want to enlarge their rear yards, they could do so in the 1926 portions of the rear yard, which is the single, the double, double hung window portions. But I think with the combination of what we would normally consider to be a significant window, a bay window, and the fact that it is, if not original, quite, quite historic, I think that the cutback is problematic for me.
All right. Thank you very much for your comments. So I think, oh, Commissioner Ginsburg, I'm sorry.
So this is a hard site, which is being seen by the fact that there are varying comments. And I'm going to add a few more. So, but first, there, there's certain things. I like, I, I think thinking about remnants of the past is an important thing. And I realized that the building, particularly on the front, has been somewhat massacred. And that the fact that it was two buildings is somewhat disappeared. But on the front, I think that my concern is, I don't want a false door. But there could be a window that is, instead of the four wide, if you had the two wide that matched the historic and then had a window that maybe had a lower sill or something that was separate to give a remnant of what was there originally would be good. I might also keep some of the patch brickwork because no matter what you do, it will always look a little patched. Because if you put new brick that matched hundred year old brick, it won't look the same. Either now, or if it looks the same now as it weathers, it wouldn't look the same. And, and so I think trying to have some recognition that it was two buildings on the front. And then on the rear, I think Commissioner Goldblum raises a, a good concern. But I would at least do what Commissioner Bland said and take the masonry down. The fire department ladder does not seem to be quite centered. And it would seem to be better if it was centered to emphasize the division between the two buildings and, and look better. And then the, you talk about studio windows as examples, but the windows on that addition do not look like studio windows, which usually were broken up and sloped. And I think if you looked at that, that would help, start to help make that addition fit in a little more. And then finally, I agree that there should be some sort of setback on the addition at the top floor instead of having it right on the masonry from below.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Chen.
There's been a lot of great comments, so I want, knowing that the chair has taken two pages of notes from all the comments so far. I'm, I'm in agreement with a lot of the comments, including the testimony. I think starting with the front facade, I'm glad they're restoring it and I, I leave it to the discretion. I, I rather that they, they restore it as much as, as possible. I think that Vice Chair Bland's comments are excellent, as well as many of the commissioners about the back facade. I think the rear facade, I think at the minimum, the central pier should be brought back down to the ground. And I, I, I will not add on to the, the comments about the, the bulkhead and the thing because there's enough suggestion, there are no suggestions out there.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. And thank you all for your really thoughtful comments. I think they were really helpful and, and I hope that the applicant has found them help, to be helpful. So we're not going to take any action today. We'll ask you to go back and re-study in particular the rear facade and the rooftop addition. There were also some suggestions about the front facade that you might want to think about, but largely a lot of support for the front facade. And we'll have you back as soon as you're ready. All right. Thank you. And we'll move to the next item.
Next item is public hearing item number four. LPC 24 dash zero nine eight two three. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, block 545, lot 40, 428 Lafayette Street, 428 Lafayette Street Building Individual Landmark, also in the NoHo Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style townhouse designed by Seth Greer, built in 1832 to 33. And the modification, the application is to modify a cellar masonry opening and to install a barrier free access lift.
Hi, my name is Knorr, representing SWA Architecture for 428 Lafayette Street in the NoHo District. Sorry, is it okay? So 428 Lafayette Street was originally built in 1833, designated in 1965 and designed by Seth Greer, although the actual architect has been, there has been some contention there with mentions of Anthony Davis as well. It was originally a row of nine marble buildings unified in appearance by a two-story Corinthian colonnade. It's known as the Colonnade Row or also the La Grange Terrace. Move on to some historical pictures. So here you could see the perspective drawing from 1833, showing the original nine buildings, which were then removed in, at least five of them were removed in 1902. Another historical photo in the middle there, the top right middle from 1895. As the area started to go down, five, five of the buildings were removed from the row. Some of the colonnade marble columns were salvaged and found later on in New Jersey. You could see another, another photo in 1940, in, in a closer perspective, as well as in the middle bottom LPC designation photo from 1965, as well as in bottom right. Here you could see the current conditions. Historic District Council for a photo circa 2008. The existing facade in the top right, as well as in the bottom. You could see where we will be doing our modifications on the bottom right. So here you can see highlighted where we will be making our modifications. There is an existing diamond plate hatch measuring 60 inches by 65 inches across and 43 inches in height, including the louver and the diagonal vertical diamond plate hatch. Here you could see on the left hand side, the existing front elevation with the area of work highlighted. And you could see on the right, the proposed front elevation, as well as a lift side view. So what we will be doing is proposing a handicap lift for handicap access in place of the existing hatch. Here are the enlarged proposed elevations. At the top, it is showing the guardrail as well and the lift tower on the left. The bottom shows everything behind the, the guardrails. So you could see the, the proposed louvers to match the existing in style and in color. The, the header above the lift door and the walls to the left and right of it. We will be using a, a simple Benjamin, Benjamin Moore black to match the color of the existing louver. This is showing a 3D Axon view of the lift, both with the lift at the sidewalk position and the lift at the basement position, as well as a 3D Axon on the right. You will see in this perspective that the ornament on the entire facade will remain undisturbed. These are existing plans in, in, in a larger perspective. It's a, on the first floor, we will have a restaurant and on the basement level, we, we, there will be a theater lounge. The area where the lift will be going into is currently a code storage area. You could see on the photos in the bottom right, the existing ductwork and the blue diamond plate is the bottom of the black diamond plate you see in the street photos above. This is the proposed work in greater context, to give you a clearer view. On the left is the existing and on the right is a proposed. The proposed work entails a, a small fill of the sidewalk hatch opening with sidewalk to match the existing and will be going right down to the basement level. These are sections in the greater context of the building. On the left hand side is the existing, on the right it's a proposed. These are the large sections of the same thing. On the left, you could see what we are proposing to have demolished. The ductwork will be removed, as well as the diamond plate hatch, both horizontally and vertically, as well as the existing louver. On the right, you could see the lift in the down position at the basement level. The, the guardrail on the left, the lift tower, with the lift mechanism. And we will be removing the door and lowering the, the concrete slab by six inches to allow ease of access for, for a handicap. And then we, we will be replacing the door in kind. This, these are some details. So on the left, you could see the enlarged elevation with essentially the lift removed. So looking only at the door, the header, the wall surrounding it and the louver above. On the right are a set of details, looking at the header above the door, the proposed louver, as well as the header above the, the walls on the side. And on the bottom is a planned detail, showing how the track will be nailed into the existing stone with actuated nails at, fasteners at 24 inches off center. So that's how we'll be connecting to the existing facade and that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have guests? Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, the guardrails are shown as glass framed with metal on the front and solid metal on the side. Are there options to make that into open railing?
We can, but this is something that we felt would match the aesthetic of the rest of it.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Chu.
Oh, you've probably looked at this, but the lift tower has to stick up higher. You can't get it down.
No, it's, it's a, it's a matter of.
All right. Other questions? Yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
The lift tower is sticking up, right, all the time.
Yeah.
And then what covers up the rest of it? Is there a a cover that covers up at grade?
I'm sorry, if there is a cover that covers the.
At the grade level.
The left, no, well, the, I'll go back to 3D here. So it would be as shown.
It's always like that on the right hand side?
Right. It would be, yes, the right hand side or the left hand side is when the lift is in the up position.
So that's, that's the way it would be. Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, let's move to public testimony. Is there anyone in the room who would like to speak on this item? Okay, noting that there isn't, I will turn it over to Gregory Collet to see if we have any remote participants.
Thank you, Chair Carroll. The first we'll be hearing from is Deana Tass Winter from Village Preservation. Deana Tass Winter, I'll be promoting you to panelist right now. Please state your name and unmute your line. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Deana Tass Winter, speaking for Village Preservation. Village Preservation finds this to be a sensible solution to a tricky problem. We appreciate that barrier free access will be introduced to this important individual landmark with relatively minimal impact on the historic fabric. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Christina Conroy from the Victorian Society in New York. Christina Conroy, I am promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Still morning, afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Christina Conroy for the Victorian Society, New York. Now, this building is part of La Grange Terrace on Colonnade Row. It's one of a group of four individual landmarks that are some of the most important in the city and some of the first to be designated by this commission in 1965. Why does the calendar notice not state clearly that this building is an individual landmark? A brief designation report notes that the building was neglected in. A brief designation report notes that the building was neglected in, neglected condition in 1965. It's obviously now much worse. What efforts are being made by the owner, tenant, and the landmarks commission to bring this building back to and maintain it in sound condition as required by law? It seems to us that the creation of a plan for this is a necessary first step before discretionary permits are issued. The proposed lift is bulky and obtrusive. Other models are available that are more transparent. Some of them are available to recede below grade when not in use. A better design should be proposed. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we'll be hearing from Lucy Levine from the Historic District Council. Lucy Levine, I'm promoting you to panelist right now. Please unmute your line and state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
Hi, Commissioners. My name is Lucy Levine. I'm speaking on behalf of the Historic District Council. HDC enthusiastically supports accessibility interventions and welcomes the addition of a barrier-free access lift here. At HDC, we believe that quality is a mark of equality, and that any access element should be designed with the same level of care and attention to detail that any other aspect of a project would perceive. In this case, we feel that a lift with a higher proportion of glass, that, I'm sorry, we feel that if a lift with a higher proportion of glass is available, that would be the most appropriate solution. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Next up, we have a call-in with an iPhone number with the final four digits of 3404. I'm going to allow you to speak now. If you could please state your name for the record and unmute your line, you'll have three minutes to speak. Thank you.
This is Steve Wiegota. I'm the architect. I have a couple of things for this project. I'm the owner of SWA. I want to send my best regards to Sarah and the staff. It's been a while.
All right. Steve, while we're in the middle of testimony, can we come back to you after we've finished all of the testimony?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't identify myself. No problem.
All right. We're going to come back to you. Thanks.
Sure.
Thank you. And I do not see any additional hands raised, so I will note that Manhattan Community Board two recommends approval, and I will bring it back to you, Chair Carroll.
Okay, thanks, Steve. You may go ahead now. Is he here? All right.
There are other locations like this. We were stumped when we first looked at this, and Tim raised the idea of doing this kind of approach. We're fortunate that we have that plate and that opening, and it just, somehow it fits the bill. So we will be able to provide accessibility to the theater and bring this space back to life. We're very happy to be able to do this work, and we're open to switching it out from glass to other things. It's really the key element for us, is to make sure that the accessibility is provided. Thank you.
Yes, please go ahead.
There, as Steve mentioned, this solution was brought on by recommendation of LPC, and there is a precedent also in the CB2 area in the following.
Yeah.
So what I'm showing here is not our drawings. It's a set of drawings that were done by another firm. So the lift here is, as you see, quite similar, aluminum black frame on glass. I will note that the door to the handicap lift does need to be done by the manufacturer, so I think it would make sense to have something that matches that in aesthetic, and that was done as well in this case.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Jefferson.
Why the color black?
That's done to match the existing diamond plate hatch, as well as the existing color of the louver. You will see the other openings within the facade also have a similar black, although I will note that we can have a variety of colors, as well as a color that can match existing stones, so that is something that will be changed.
All right. Did you consider a lighter color that might blend in with the facade behind?
We considered it, but we thought that the black would seem more like a minimal intervention just because of the existing black.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, if the applicant or the, or council or both can address the issues that were brought up during testimony about care of the building, I realize that the, you know, wider use of the building may contribute to bringing it back to a better condition, but if someone could just address that.
Yeah, I can. I'm sorry.
Okay, Steve, you go ahead, and then we'll have our deputy counsel speak to it as well.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We only, we don't control anything else, but if you want us to control the rest of the building, I'll be happy to do that, but it's not within our scope of work and/or, yeah. But we're very open to it. Yep, thank you.
And you're representing the tenant at the ground floor, right?
Correct.
Correct. Okay.
And I'd like to just add that the ownership does have a very, very slow-moving restoration plan underway for the facade and the columns. Right now, they're doing a consolidant testing for the best way to repair the columns, and that takes six to nine months in a lab for the various samples to be resolved, and that testing should be done early this spring. And at that point, the consultant for the ownership should have recommendations on how to move forward with more restoration of that facade.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay. Any other final questions? All right, so let's move to our discussion. Commissioner Goldblum, would you make a motion to close the hearing? Thank you. Commissioner Chen, would you second that motion?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this is an individual landmark. It is identified in the agenda by its individual landmark name, which is 428 Lafayette Street Building. So, you know, it doesn't say explicitly individual landmark, but it does have the individual landmark building name, and it is one of a group of separately designated individual landmark buildings that are all, that all read as one. They have historically had a variety of different things happening at the ground floors of each of the buildings in the row. There's a theater in one of them, and different commercial spaces have done slightly different things over time. So this is a proposal to address barrier-free access for the ground floor tenant in this one building, and they are, they need to go down, so they are proposing a barrier-free access lift, elevator lift, that would have glass sides and would go down and be stored in the down position in front of a louver and then a new door opening below. They have proposed finishing it in black to match the infill within the openings, the opening with which it aligns. So we'll begin our discussion. Commissioner Jefferson, would you like to start this one?
I think it's appropriate, and, you know, there's an object placed there, and, you know, you could look at it artistically as a piece of sculpture. It's a functional element, and paint it black, and that's what they did.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Goldblum?
I think it's appropriate, although I would think it'd be interesting for the staff to look at it with an option of a picket rail or something lighter, and also with a stone color. It's such an amazing complex of buildings. I was just thinking about it in the context of the last application, you know, why can't a rich person just buy all of these?
I know.
Fix them all up? Wouldn't that be nice? But you have to have a big mega mansion in New York. Wouldn't this be the right one?
Yes, it would be fantastic. Commissioner Ginsburg?
I agree, appropriate. I agree with Commissioner Goldblum that you should look with staff at potentially a lighter color that matches the stone instead of the black, so it's more recessed, but great to be making it the building accessible.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Chen?
I echo the sentiment. Anytime that access can be made is great, especially given this occasion from across the public theater. I leave it up to the rest of the commissioners to see if the color needs to be changed. I see, yeah, I do understand if it's being dark, may have, nothing's perfect, so therefore.
Okay. Vice Chair Bland?
In the 1830s, this was the place to live. It still is a pretty cool set of buildings, unique in the city, and I'm happy the Victorian Society reminded us that it was among the earliest individual landmarks made in the city, which is all to say, it's important to get this elevator right, but it's also important to remind ourselves that accessibility into all buildings, but particularly where we have purview, the landmark buildings in the city can get accommodated. And I think this has done a good job of doing it. It's in the right place. Whether it's black or dark gray, I leave it to staff or others to figure that out. I think the less it can be noticed, the better. I don't view it as an art object that needs, it should recede. Otherwise, I think it's in scale, and whether it's glass or not is also, to me, a detail that is not critically important.
Okay. Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I agree, because most of the time you're not going to actually see the lift, but from what I can see, anyway, but my, I had an initial reaction about color as well, but I think that the consistency in this case is what's important, and I should certainly work with the staff on any, you know, what the appropriate choice is here, but other than that, I don't have any issue with the proposal.
Okay. Commissioner Lutfi?
Yeah, I agree. Any proposal to provide barrier-free access is a wonderful one in our city, especially in these older buildings. It can be very difficult, and in this case, it's a landmark. I think they've done a great job. I think Diana had said it's mostly invisible. I'm absolutely fine with the design as is, but can go along with what the majority thinks.
Okay. Commissioner Chu?
Yeah, I think this is appropriate, and just in terms of color, I tend to agree with other comments that maybe they should look at a lighter color. Receding is good, but it is not a back-of-house lift. It's for front-of-house people with handicaps to use, so it's a public service.
Okay. Commissioner Master?
Yeah, I can find this appropriate, as is.
So I think where we are is we can make a motion to approve it today, and then we'll ask them to work with staff to review final approval of the color in the field.
In the matter of LPC 24-09823, 429 Lafayette Street, Street Building, a landmark building, application is to modify cellar masonry openings and to install a barrier-free I note that the building is part of the La Grange Terrace Individual Landmark, one of the group of four remaining Greek Revival style townhouses, which are unified by a continuous two-story Corinthian colonnade, and that the style, scale, material, and detail of the buildings are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historical character of the NoHo Historic District. I note further that the National Trust for Historic Preservation holds an easement on the property and has approved of the proposed changes. I recommend approval, finding that the ground floor of La Grange Terrace had been significantly altered over time to accommodate entrances at the basement level, that the removal of the sidewalk hatch and existing infill at the basement opening will not damage or eliminate any significant architectural features, that the proposed path from lift would provide barrier-free access to the, in the least intrusive manner possible, that the lift would be stored below grade when not in use, and will sit below the first-floor window, and will not obscure any significant architectural features, that the design of the proposed lift features now a black finish metal elements and a glass gate, and the installation of solid metal doors and louvers of the basement opening behind it, and would call on, and will not call it undue attention to itself, and that the work will not distract from the special architecture, architectural or historic character of the individual landmark of the NoHo Historic District. And I will add that with the staff, the architect should review color, appropriate colors with the, with staff approval.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Commissioner Master, would you second that motion?
Second.
John, will you call the vote?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Chu?
Aye.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Aye.
Commissioner Master?
Aye.
Ten in favor, none opposed, the motion passes.
All right, so that's approved. Thank you. All right.
Thank you, Carol. It's Steve. Happy holidays to everyone. Thank you.
Holidays to you too. Thank you. Okay, so we are almost 45 minutes behind schedule, so we are going to break for lunch now, and we will come back at 10 past 1:00, and we will resume with item number five. So we'll ask all members of the public who are in the Zoom meeting and wish to return this afternoon to voluntarily exit the meeting at this time, so that you don't have any